All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome. We're going to call this meeting to order. This is a City Commission workshop, February 26, 2020. And we have one item on the agenda, Code Enforcement Workshop. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Motion to second to adopt the agenda. Anybody wish to comment on adoption of the agenda? Come forth, please.
I just want to ask where are these?
Do you have mine?
You're on the table behind you.
Oh, okay. Thank you. And do the public get to say anything earlier?
A general public at the end will have ability to comment on the items during the item. Okay, all favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Okay, Mr. Feldman, turn it over to you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. So I asked for this workshop because I wanted to talk about what's going on with our code enforcement, specifically demolition of old structures. Talked to you about signage issues that we're finding, and talked about fences and then hearing the essence on your minds. So I don't know how many of you know Pete Backhouse. Pete took over roughly the same time that I came aboard as our code compliance manager. And I'm going to let Pete run with the presentation. And however the commission would like to engage, it's fine by us. If you've had issues with questions that we're going along, feel free to reject those. For us, it's going to be very valuable to hear the perspective, because that'll help guide our priorities as we're moving forward with code enforcement.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Feldman. And I believe, President Santos, you've got some slides to share as well after this.
Very short research order. Let's hop on if you're going to be here, and you're going to do them.
I'm welcome. Ms. Gregor will be here.
There'll be somebody else here.
Okay, very good. So we'll do that after Mr. Backhouse's presentation. Mr. Backhouse, welcome.
Thank you. So our philosophy is we're dedicated to partnering with our neighbors to improve the livability, health, and safety of our community. And I want to emphasize the partnering part of this. Earlier today, one of our My GMB calls came in to our Department for Trash on Property in Mill Run. And the notes from the citizen were, "Mill Run, please send Officer Rick. He will get the HOA to act." And several areas like that in the picture because of trash. And our officers work to build that type of relationship in the communities that they patrol. They are assigned zones that they patrol regularly, and they are responsible for being proactive in those zones, which we'll talk a little bit about more about. We build community. We deal with quality of life issues. We take those very seriously and want to improve the neighborhoods that we're working in. And our values are there at the top of the screen. They are applied to all parties that are involved, including the violator and complainant, the neighbors, and our community builders. Everybody is held to those standards.
And you may have noticed at the very top, Neighborhood Enhancement. We're rebranding what we do in code enforcement to be Neighborhood Enhancement to more effectively relate to our mission out there. So code enforcement will be moving away, and Neighborhood Enhancement teams will be moving away.
And that came as part of the reorganization on February 17, where Neighborhood Enhancement now reports to Andrew, and then, of course, to Dan in that chain of command. There is a little bit of influence of the old still in there, and that's in this first bullet point. It is not our policy to enforce. It's our policy to gain compliance with city codes. And the vast majority of the time, that happens through education. We run into folks who just don't know that they're violating whatever the ordinance says. And when we talk to them about it, we have an over 90% voluntary compliance rate with folks correcting whatever issues are out there. We prioritize things because we do have resources, only so many that we can apply. We deal with life safety issues. Those are the highest priority that we deal with to make sure that they get corrected. And we always want to be consistent and clear in our objectives so that when folks hear of a violation, they know what they need to do to correct it and come into compliance. The way that we do that, voluntary compliance, as I mentioned, we do education. We talk to people. We go to neighborhood meetings. We discuss things with folks. We do door hangers to give them warnings of things that may be not in compliance with city code, to make them aware of what's going on. We do courtesy notices, a variety of ways just to educate and inform to bring things into compliance. If that doesn't work, a more formal way is the Notice of Violation. It's a document that is issued to a person explaining what code is violated and exactly what they need to do to correct it to come into compliance. We also have parts of the code that we can enforce through civil citation. Typically, we do that in a circumstance where it's not the property owner that's responsible for whatever is going on. It's someone else, and they are better remedied because Chapter 162 holds property owners responsible for violations that happen on their properties. So we use a civil citation where that doesn't apply. Through the city attorney, we can petition for an injunction to cease an activity. Permit revocation, whether it be landlord or special event permits, if folks aren't doing what they're supposed to, we can take their permits away. Nuisance abatement, overgrown, this applies mostly to overgrown yards. We have a fund available where if those yards aren't properly maintained, we can go out and mow them for them and then assess a lien for the costs. Dangerous buildings is the next thing we're going to talk about. If there are structures out there that are a hazard, that are deemed dangerous, we have some resources to take them down. And we work with a myriad group of other agencies to get compliance, including in-the-city places like Solid Waste, the GPD, and GFR, and planning, public works. Outside, we work a lot with the Department of Environmental Protection with the county for pollution cases or environmental concerns. The biggest one we had recently was the Wing House on Archer Road. They were illegally dumping oil behind their business, and we worked with DEP to get them to clean that up. And then the Department of Business and Professional Regulation on the state level we're involved with as well for regulating businesses to make sure that they do things that they're supposed to. So there are a number of structures in the city which meet the definition of a dangerous building. In your backup, I provided Chapter 16. By definition, there are 10 criteria which this structure can fall under to be deemed dangerous building. Members or structures, things within walls, listing or leaning, decay, et cetera, et cetera. These buildings have been around for a very long time, some of them in excess of 15 years, so they've accumulated due to owner inaction and a lack of a budget on our part to be able to go out and resolve them. The latest list that we've compiled has 119 structures on it throughout the city that meet our definition of dangerous building. With the funds we have available, we are able to do three to five a year, depending on the costs. And we prioritize the structures accordingly to get to the most dangerous ones and take them down with the funds that we have available. This is a map that shows where the structures are in Gainesville. You will see they are in every corner of the city. A lot of them are concentrated in old Gainesville, which makes sense because that's where the oldest structures are. We also have them broken down by district. District one, you can see there's a lot of them southeast Gainesville and into Pleasant Street. District two, some over in the Duval area. District three probably has the fewest, but there are still a number of structures there.
Nice work.
All right, I stand on the shoulders of giants.
Yep. And District four. In Chapter 16, it says specifically, and I've highlighted the word "shall," if the dangerous building is in a condition to endanger health, safety, it shall be ordered to be repaired or demolished, which is what we do through the paperwork. If the owner doesn't obtain a permit to board and seal within one month, then we shall order the demolition of the building. If they don't begin repairs within six months, we shall order the demolition of the building. So there is a timeframe there to try and achieve that compliance of getting the building rehabilitated or removed. So with 119 structures...
Pete, would you pause for a second, please?
Absolutely. Go back to the last slide. It's her question about, so if one of these buildings is, these are through the magistrate, they have been deemed...
The dangerous building is separate from the magistrate?
It is separate.
There is a process specifically for dealing with those structures.
Okay, so a building could be taken off and removed from the demolition list based on just the decision by a code enforcement officer, then or someone does need to do that, I guess? Is that correct? It doesn't have to go to the magistrate or to a judge?
Correct.
Yes. Okay. Yes, thank you.
Sorry. If I'm moving too quickly, please let me know. I'll be happy to slow down and answer any questions. So to deal with the 119 that are out there, this is a cost estimate. It is fluid because our list is fluid. I'll explain that in just a second. Just for the demolition and removal of the debris would be $812,000. That's based on a $3 a square foot estimate by our contractor plus the disposal costs of the debris. $24,000 for title searches, $32,000 for newspaper ads to make sure we achieve service, which is required by Florida State statute. And the reason we do that is many times when we send out these notices, they come back not picked up by certified mail. So we have to do it through the public means. $400 to mail out the postage. So our first estimate is $868,000. Now, I say that's fluid. The picture you have up there is a building that was on our dangerous building list at 710 Northwest Fifth Avenue. A fire occurred in the structure and damaged it even more than it already was, so it had to be taken down immediately because of the danger to the public. So that one's no longer on there, so that changes it a little bit. The debris is being cleaned up this week, by the way, so that lot will now be a vacant lot. This does not include the staff resources that are involved. This is just the money to deal with the buildings with the contractor and the notifications. If we do this, each structure takes about eight to 10 hours of our staff time and two to three hours for the city attorney to be involved. It also doesn't include things like mitigation. If we find asbestos, that increases the cost of removing the building. So we would like to start this in fiscal year 20 and remove all of the structures within one year. We would start with the highest priority ones, which you will look on your list. Those are the ones with the five stars next to them. There are 13 of them. And then work down the list accordingly. We have not identified a funding source to come up with the money to do this. We do believe, however, that if the owners see that the city is starting to move forward with dealing with them instead of just letting them sit out there, that they'll become more proactive in dealing with them as well. So some of them will come off the list as they start to get rehabilitated, restored, whatever needs to be done. I can't project what that would be. There are a number of them that are heirs' properties, which it is very hard to determine a responsible party for, so it may become incumbent on the city to resolve them and take them down. Now, if we do go forward with this, that's two to three structures a week that we'll be taking down, which means that I'll have 20 to 30 hours of staff time and city attorney time in addition being devoted to that. All of those costs would be built into the lien and attached to the lien when we assess them and attach to the property, which goes to the discussion of how the city would recover the costs. The way that code enforcement is allowed to do that currently under state statute is to attach a 20-year lien to the property for whatever those costs of abatement are. That includes any fines that may come out of it as well. It is possible, if the liens reach a certain level, that the city can foreclose on the properties. If the value, I believe, exceeds 50%, the city can foreclose and then turn around and sell the property and try and recoup the money that way. We're also looking at a way of assessing the money on property taxes as a special assessment versus using liens. And we're trying to develop a methodology for providing that as an option. And we don't want to tell you we're going to guarantee that we're going to get all $868,000 back because that is unrealistic. The property owners have the opportunity to go to the special magistrate and request a reduction, rescission of any fines and costs that could take place. This commission may decide to donate some of the properties for affordable housing. I came from the meeting earlier today where that discussion was held, so there's no guarantee that all of that money is going to be recovered. That's my presentation on the dangerous building part of this.
I have another question.
Sure.
Thanks, Pete. What is the law regarding homestead property?
Homesteaded properties are protected from liens.
Okay.
Lee raised a very good point on that. How can a property that is dangerous be occupied and homesteaded? I'm not sure it can. So that would mean work on our part for any's that may be homesteaded to have them removed from the homestead.
And how would you go about doing that?
Request a property appraisal or do an investigation, determine whether it's a valid homestead or not, and they can remove the designation.
Looking at what we currently have, because I know of instances where we have homes that have racked up so many, so much, and it's homesteaded property. So what can we do or what have we done about violators that have all these liens that are not paying? Well, you can't, well, if they're homesteaded, they can't have a lien on the property. So what do we do if they're not in compliance?
You can lien personal property.
Okay.
Go after other assets that the property owners have rather than that property specifically. And that's another reason why we're researching as a possible special assessment on the property tax rolls to try and clarify.
Santos, let me talk briefly about that because I'll classify liens as two types, nuisance liens and punitive liens, or nuisance fines and punitive fines. So when we take action on a property such as board it up or cut the grass or demolish it, we're creating a special benefit for that property, and we're using our resources to do that. Cities in Florida can have adopted a process to convert those liens into special assessment liens and then transfer those over to the property tax bill during the annual collection. Pretty common practice right now. We don't do that. When you get to punitive fines, such as, you know, I've procured $100,000 of fines because I had an operable vehicle in my front yard on there. Those don't create any special benefit for the property, and those cannot be converted over to special assessment liens because I haven't met that standard on them. So we have cases where we have punitive liens. You have a list of some of those within backup. And those, if they don't pay them, we have to look at other alternative methods. If the property's not homesteaded, we can foreclose. There's a cost to foreclosing, including paying off any loans that are superior. That was a case, Wells Fargo versus Palm Bay, which I'm very familiar with on there. We can try to get some injunctive relief through the courts in order to allow the city to go onto the property and correct the violation, remove the car, fix the soffit, do whatever is ultimately required. But that has to be under court order on there. And if we do work then, we may be able to convert it to a special assessment lien. As Pete mentioned, some cities look at attaching personal property, but that's not easy to do either. And either, you know, I'd ask the commission to give very serious consideration of the consequences of doing that, because if you take somebody's car, you may be affecting their livelihood. And so I think we need to make sure we understand exactly what that means under those circumstances. So we have very limited remedies if it's a homestead property.
The properties that's listed, do we know what's homesteaded? How many are homesteaded, and what's investment property? Do you have that breakdown of heirs, investment, homestead?
I don't have the specific numbers. I know that very few of any of them are actually homesteaded. There are a number of them that are heirs' properties.
And what do we do regarding heirs? First of all, what's been our practice in dealing with heirs' property? And second, what are you proposing to do in dealing with heirs' property?
We research to try and find anybody who will claim responsibility for the property. With heirs' properties, typically, we come up with a list of relatives, and we will mail every relative notification of what's going on, giving them the opportunity to respond and take whatever action that they can. And this isn't just for demolitions. This is for any violation that it carries on an heirs' property, because we do have that obligation to notify whoever the owner is. If we don't get a response, then we would move forward with whatever needs to be done to correct the violation.
And if it needs to be demoed, then the heirs' property will still have the costs associated with it, the lien? And if, so when does it get out of our hands? If we put a lien on heirs' property and say, for instance, if they wanted to sell the property, the buyer would have to pay off the lien, or that's an option? How does that part work?
Yeah, so in order for the buyer to get clear title of the lien, we have to be satisfied. We can be satisfied in two ways. One is they pay it, right? Either the seller, the buyer, or somebody through their real estate transaction satisfies the lien and makes it. Or they can petition the special magistrate for a reduction and explain their case. Generally, as a minimum, we should always be able to recover our costs that are involved in that, either in staff time or physical work.
Okay.
There is another difficulty with the heirs' property, and it's because of the lack of the responsible party, it becomes very difficult to sell it because you don't have anybody to sign title of the property over until it goes through probate or some other legal system.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Move up next to it.
So, I mean, we've still got more to present.
Yeah. Just wanted to make sure that we're done with that part of this.
I have questions on afterwards.
Yeah, they bring up all that question now, or let's wait a little? Let's just wait. Let's get, because there's a lot of people.
So our next topic is liens. There are 257 properties that currently have liens assessed against them, and you have that list in your backup. The liens range from $10 to over $1 million on these properties. And as Lee alluded to, they are for violations, fines for not coming into compliance, for administrative costs, for costs of abatement. Those are all built into those fines. The total amount for all of the liens is almost $19,500,000. How can the city enforce them? We've already talked about that. The city can foreclose on the properties and try to sell them. Or they can wait for the properties to be sold, for the title to be cleared, and the lien to be satisfied that way. One of the other things that happens, though, is if the city takes possession of this property, there are other costs associated with that. It takes the property off of the tax rolls, and there are maintenance costs for the properties. And we deal with our land rent coordinator for those type of properties where they make a lot of compliance, like needing to be moved or somehow otherwise. So just bring that up to bring to your attention that those liens are sitting out there. There are two other matters that I want to make you aware of that are administrative. The first one, our current practice, is when a lien gets settled. It goes through the magistrate for a hearing, and the magistrate issues an order. That order currently goes to the mayor for his signature. Lee, in reviewing of the statute, brought to our attention that may not be quite the way that it's supposed to work. So in talking with the city attorney about that, we're going to have to review that process. When that lien gets settled, it has to be approved by the entire commission. So you're going to see things show up on your consent agenda regarding this, and so it's going to be handled that way in the future rather than going to the mayor for his signature. Just to make you aware when you see it, that is what that's about. And we're also exploring to see if interest can be attached to the liens that are sitting there rather than remaining a static amount, that they can increase in value over time. Anything about liens that anybody would like to discuss? Fences. As you know, we have a number of fences in our city. Fences are covered in two different places in the ordinance. They're in Chapter 13 of Minimum Housing, and they're also in Chapter 30 of the Land Development Code. The language is very similar in both locations. I happened to deal with this one today because a daycare put up a fence, and they're disputing their requirement to have the finished side of the fence facing out. So there's some discussions ongoing about that. But it does say specifically how the fences are to be erected, the types of materials that need to be used. And if it's a wall, then a permit is required. But there are no permits currently for fences within the city. For the maintenance part, fences may need to be upright. So if they're leaning, that obviously indicates that there's some structural integrity issues. Some of the supports aren't working. If there are portions of the fence that are damaged, then they need to be fixed with the proper materials, and that's all explained in this section under maintenance. Basically, when we send out our Notice of Violation for this, they have three options: repair the fence, replace the fence, remove the fence. Removal also puts it into compliance. And we are being proactive to try and identify fences that aren't in compliance and notify the property owners to fix them accordingly.
If we reply that, could I call the fence in?
Hold on, Mr. Shepherd. We'll give you an opportunity, just a second.
Sorry.
Derek, you're good.
Finally, under signs. Window signage is a definite concern. Previous leadership had interpreted that window signage could be incorporated into the total square footage with the permanent signs of the building, so there wasn't a lot of enforcement done. We've reexamined that and determined that it would be more appropriate to enforce the code as it's written. And the code currently states under Chapter 30 that window signage is limited to 12 square foot in area, which obviously these signs don't comply. So we're going to be doing, we have issued a couple of Notices of Violation to some of our more egregious properties on their signage to get them to start the correction process. For the rest of the businesses in the city, we're going to be sending out courtesy letters, letting them know exactly what the code states and giving them the opportunity to voluntarily correct. And if they don't, then we'll be issuing them Notice of Violations to clean up these windows and make them more in compliance with what the code says.
Let me just stress, there's a crime prevention aspect to that that is critical. If we can't, from a patrol standpoint, see what's happening inside the store, it makes it prone to the law or other actions happening inside. So the typical seven... So, the typical set of principles is to have this minimal signage as you're moving around so that you can see through it all, everybody can be protected.
Part of the reason for bringing this up is there will be a letter going out to businesses probably within the next week, within the next week. So, you may get some calls in the commission offices asking why they got this letter, did something change? Nothing has changed in the fact that we are educating them about what the code says and we're going to be getting, following up with them if they, if it doesn't meet the code. So, nothing has changed, but we will be educating, the letter will go out, so you might get a few calls.
Very good. Okay, thank you, Mr. Backhouse. Adrian, I think you had some questions, I'll get you back started.
Yeah, so I, I'm glad we're having this discussion. I think we need to, so for the dangerous buildings, some of these dangerous buildings can be renovated. I think there's, it may be considered dangerous, but it may not be like complete neglect. Like the, for example, there's the, the building on Northwest 13th Street, the, you know, the four or five story building that was a office building, it's kind of all gutted out now. That's considered on the dangerous building list. I think it can still be renovated and doesn't need to be kind of taken down. So, I think we need to kind of look at really what are the most, like that one that had a fire and there's no way that ever is going to be able to be brought back. Yes, those are the ones that really are dangerous, that really should be demolished. But I think we need to find, and one of the, I think we need to start foreclosing on properties that have continued to be the issues. I don't know, I've asked our staffs, I don't know anybody who's actually, we've actually gone forward on foreclosure in 15, 20 years. That's one of the reasons why we have all of these bad structures in town, there's no reason for anybody to fix it. So, I think we need to take those liens and force them, get objective relief from the courts and force a sale because what we need to do is we need to get rid of those owners that are bad. We need to get them into the hands of an owner who will actually do something with the property. Because my goal is to get the buildings and properties back into productivity and to increase the quality of life of the surrounding neighbors. And these owners who have these properties for 10, 15, 20 years of code violations, they're not going to fix it. So, finding ways to be able to foreclose the properties, bring them out, either sell them or put them towards affordable housing, whatever may be the best for that, that site. I think that's what we need to do. For demolition, one of the proposals, bring it forward as part of the revamp of our recycling ordinance, the ZR Waste Ordinance, some cities are doing, is buildings that are over 50 years old, you can't actually demolish them and throw everything away, you have to do a salvage. So, you have to go in and salvage the, there's good pine, there's good bricks and stuff like that that can be reused. And definitely our more historic structures, I would rather us take that and reuse that. And also, I think, it may increase the cost of, of demolition, demolition of a building, but it also means that, that I'm more likely that building gets renovated. And that's one of the things I would like for us to, how do we get these buildings to be renovated and back into kind of use? Definitely more kind of historic homes, some of them are beyond case, but for the fences, I think we should definitely enforce it better. I think we should probably have, not allow tall privacy fences on street frontage. I think it creates walls in neighborhoods and it's not, it feels weird, it really breaks up the neighborhood, you don't, it makes it harder to walk. So, I think if we should, it also messes with division triangles. So, if you're going to have, I would, I would like for us to change our ordinance where if you have something in the front yard, if it's in the front yard, it would have to be permitted or have to be three feet or something, four feet or something like that. But that's for the demo buildings, I would, I would like for us to, and for the ones that we have all these people who have liens for years and years and years, there's no reason for them to fix it. We need to foreclose and turn around the properties and get into people's hands who will actually do something with the properties. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, first, let's talk about the signs for a moment. And not so much the signs themselves, but the, the process of mailing the letter out. Have we worked with communications to make sure there's a coordinated message? Because some folks are going to get the, I'll promise you that a couple of folks are going to get a letter and the first thing they're going to do is they're going to go on Facebook and create a, a thing where, I mean, we've been through this before, that there, it'll be a thing and then, you know, it'll be the story in the media for, for three weeks. We need to, knowing that we're sending the letter out, we need to make sure we're ahead of that. And obviously, by having this conversation, we're not ahead of it. But we need to be aware that there, it's not just going to be a question of a business owner calling complaining to us, that's fine, I don't have any problem with that. But it will almost certainly create a situation where the city plays defense again for a few weeks. It's necessary, it's absolutely necessary, I'm glad we're doing this, but we need to make sure that, that's a coordinated communications effort that isn't just sending letters out.
I have been in touch with Shelby and discussed it with her. I don't have a specific plan for her yet dealing with it on that end, but she is aware of it. I will continue to work with her.
Good, because that's totally predictable, so. I'm glad we have the beginning of a, a plan there. I want to understand a little better the difference between a building that is dangerous, when we're talking about dangerous buildings, one that, that could fall down and one that creates a dangerous circumstance. For instance, I'm, I'm not suggesting that we run, deal with this building right away because I know it's an expensive building to deal with, but the one on 13th Street, the former social security building. I, my understanding from several factors is that it's a solid building, that, that it's not going to fall down. It's not a dangerous building, but it absolutely creates a dangerous circumstance. It's next to a high school, forget the saying. I mean, we're, we're, it's kind of the definition of attractive nuisance.
Is that the one next to coffee culture?
Yeah, coffee culture and GHS.
That'd be great to see something come out of that.
That'd be great if the school board would consider picking it up. I mean, but we certainly, yeah. There is a good use for that building. There is a good commercial use for that building or a good administrative use by some institution. It just continues to slide downhill. So, that's the sort of thing where I don't know what the difference is exactly, but I know there's a difference between a building that is a danger because it's falling down and a, an attractive nuisance building. And that is, to me, the, the best example of that. So, so I'd like to hear about the difference between those and how we might prioritize based on, on that difference.
So, I mean, I just wanted to real briefly mention that property in particular, about, I don't know, about every six months or so, we'll have a group come in who's interested in redeveloping it. They'll usually, they'll meet with us, they'll, we've had some that have even developed some layout plans and gotten different, you know, sort of, you know, different points in the process. But I mean, it is to, to the extent that it's on the dangerous building list, but it's also right there on Northwest 13th Street and in a, you know, in a prime area. There's a lot of redevelopment potential, not just for the building, but also for the site itself. And most of the plans that have come in have some combination of adaptive reuse of the building with some additional square footage being added for commercial or residential uses. So, there is, I think, even more than necessarily that, you know, whether a dangerous building is to who, it's also, is there, is there more potential for redevelopment of the site, you know, depending on the location or the, the size of the property or the type of building?
Yeah, and that one's a, clearly an outlier, too. It's over 43,000 square feet. There's nothing else in this list above 5,000 square feet. So, it's the, it's the first one that pops into our mind, I think, in our conversations among staff. It's the one that, oh, you're talking about that building? Yeah, that building and 118 others. So, I think of, you know, as you look at the list and as we kind of spot check them, a lot of them are, you know, smaller stick homes, you know, that are in a state where they're probably not reusable. That one just is one that is right in front of our face. The ones that do probably have that potential for rehab, they're probably lower on the list and I think those are the ones that we kind of hope that the owner takes some action once they see us coming down the list. Because it's, you know, we, because we do this for public safety, you know, quality of life types of issues, we're not doing it to become land barons, we, we start with the most dangerous ones first. Our hope is that those ones that have the potential you're talking about, where they're more of a nuisance possibility, but they have some value to them, those are probably going to be, I'm looking at Pete to check me if I'm wrong, so they're probably going to be lower down the list.
Yes.
And we hope that by the time we get to them that they've been addressed. But if not, yeah, we, there's the, the hope that we can reuse and not just tear down a house that still has some life left in it.
Yeah, I would like to avoid tearing places down if we possibly can, but I also don't want to look the other way.
One of the reasons that that one rose to the level that it did, in addition to the degradation of the structure, is the level of crime that takes place there. And the fact that it's next to a high school, there have been serious crimes that have taken place on that.
Yeah.
Because the fence is erected and continues to get torn down and continues to come back as that and because of the hazard to the community, not just the structure itself, but what's taking place on the premises, it's one of the reasons it's so high on the list.
Yeah, that's an attractive nuisance.
And unless, unless a buyer wants to take responsibility for it, to do something to stop that from happening, there's.
It's good for all of us.
Well, one of the things we need to do is if there are mortgages on these properties, we have to figure out how to have a conversation with the banks with regard to, to those because they do have some responsibility under the mortgage documents to comply with federal, state, and local laws and so.
And they also want to protect their assets.
Well, they, right, no, I mean, depending on the value.
Right, yes, if there's a.
So, another question that I had, a fair number of these, majority of these are, are homes. I think we're going to find out, and I'm sure you already thought of this, but while they may be boarded up, they're probably occupied. Squatters, yeah.
So, so that's where we have to, if we do have squatters, we need to work on some social services. I mean, we don't want to make, even though I wouldn't call it a home, we still don't want to add more individuals to the streets. But the other thing that's happening, too, is while some of these homes are boarded, I wouldn't necessarily use the term of squatters, but we do have drug use that occurs in them and so, because we, we see paraphernalia inside some of these structures, we see that the boards are ripped off and people are, you know, going in and so, you know, we need to be sensitive that if somebody has made it to their home, that we treat them as neighbors and we try to assist them. But they may not be well off being in a unsafe structure either. And so, it's, again, it's a balance. We, we don't just want to go in as bulldozers.
Right. There've been a few instances, too, where the property owner knowingly allows folks to stay there, has it under the table, you know, give me a few bucks and yeah, I'll turn a blind eye to it. You know, those are situations where someone thinks they're paying rent, they think they have a, a right to be there of some sort, they're, they're not fully squatting in it because they're doing it with the knowledge of the owner. So, unfortunate situations that, to the manager's point, we, we would want to deal with those folks with respect and compassion.
And I mean, in this context, there were, we were at a Fifth Avenue neighborhood meeting a few weeks ago after the fire that occurred and several of the neighbors there were like, oh yeah, people were living in that house and it was, all the utilities been pulled off. And it was, it wasn't like on this, on the DL, it was like people were openly living in that house, the duplex right next door, all the utilities were pulled off, same, same scenario.
May have been the reason for the fire, it's still under investigation.
Okay, we have Gail and Gigi now.
Thank you. Gigi may have asked this question when I was out, but is there a, a list of the different types of properties and the categories?
Different.
I think she mentioned like heirs' properties, homesteaded properties, like is that something that?
We, we can develop a list off of, off of here. Homestead, we can tell you because, you know, that is easily determined by the, like property appraiser's website.
Investor owned.
Right, so, and we, so we can tell you whether a property is homesteaded or not, but again, nobody should be in an unsafe structure, nobody should have a homestead.
Right.
That's part of my definition. Heirs' property may be a little bit more difficult because it may still be in the name of the deceased individual, we don't know whether they're deceased or not. And so, without doing, you know, full title work, properties, we may not know that. But before we actually took into action, we have to complete the full title work and make sure that we're providing notice to everybody who might have an interest.
And adding to that investor owned, is it possible to even know that?
I mean, you can tell sometimes by if it's in the name over LLC.
Investor LLC.
But let's say I own a piece of property, it's just that maybe you wouldn't know that I'm investing in it or not.
Right, right. And the, that question, it ha, it has come up a couple of times, so I'm curious, the, we would approach these properties, that wouldn't be a criteria that makes them more or less dangerous because, you know, our purpose, the public purpose for doing this is to address a safety, a life safety issue. We have those 16 cri, not 16, 10. Eight, eight questions in Chapter 16.
Oh, 10 and 16.
10 and 16, sorry. Of things, criteria, then that's how they develop the category five for, you know, the stars in the, in the dangerous item list. So, the categories, yeah, so on the far, sorry, that was.
I just, it's important to know.
It's far left column, you'll see 5, 4, 3, 2. So, they're, they're prioritized based on safety factors.
Five being the worst?
Five being the worst.
Do you want to get there?
Yeah, sorry, it's a bit of a miss, um.
I think you were out of the room when you got the meeting.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's a, unlike most rating systems, five stars here is bad. So, if you're a five star property, you are not.
You're good to go.
Yeah, Expedia, you're good to go. You're not popping at the top of the Expedia list. So, the, all of those, everything that goes into that rating is based on public safety in some way. I don't think there's anything attractive nuisance, structural integrity, crime issue. So, there's, it's not, not, you know, who owns it or the type of entity that owns it doesn't.
What the zoning is, that makes no difference. So, we're looking specifically at the structure itself.
I do want to get back to that specific point, but before that, I want to ask, can you take into the process by which you came up with this system and also like how you, how you ascertained that these were, you know, these are dangerous properties? Like, is there a checklist that you did? Like, did you go in, did you like look at the properties, you talk, like what did you get?
We become aware of the property, can be proactive, can be through citizen complaint, that there's something going on there. We do an investigation and determine whether it rises to the level of a dangerous building by the definition of Chapter 16. If it does, we send out notification to the property owner on record that we believe it is a dangerous building and give them the opportunity to respond and correct whatever the violation is. If they do not correct the violation, then we need to move forward. They have options, they can board and seal the property and they have the opportunity to do that as a temporary fix. Or they can demolish the property or they can apply for permits to renovate the property. Okay, those are the three ways to fix it.
Can you take me through the investigation part?
We have a dedicated officer who handles our dangerous buildings and he goes out and physically inspects the structure and looks for the things that are listed in Chapter 16 as potential issues.
Okay, so, I mean, so there's one person or a few people that has, that had, that's seen all these buildings?
One, one.
One person?
At least one person, at least.
Okay.
And we don't go out and just, for Alan, Pete, you mentioned that it's a, it's really a little, it's, it's in your backup. It's just to really illustrate this moment in time and we don't go out on a regular basis and recheck them. It could be that somebody on that list has since cleaned up their property and we don't know about it yet because it just hasn't been reported to us. But at some point, somewhat, a person from our team has gone out, placed eyes on it and looked at the eight credit criteria that are in Chapter 16. It shows signs of collapse, overall degradation, location of the structure, meaning it's, you know, adjacent to some other type of.
A school.
A school, something along those lines.
Is there like a checklist? Like this person's.
Eight things.
Okay, so there, so there's paperwork to support all of this?
Yes, absolutely. It's not just one person depending on.
Yeah, that's what I wanted.
Pete worked me for long, but even after we prepare. Ultimately, it goes to the special magistrate?
Not, the dangerous buildings do not, unless there's an appeal. They do have the opportunity to appeal the decision, which would be heard by the special magistrate.
So, so that's going to be one thing that I want to fix because I believe in the due process that before, we ought to get a demolition order from the special magistrate on, on these. And demolition order, and so that may be something I'll talk back with our staff on. But the demolition order may impose a running fine for building is demolished, which would then provide us some leverage to foreclose on some properties if we have fines. So we can potentially take the property on there. But regardless, I think there ought to be an order in place, giving a deadline for the building to be demolished before we take that.
And, and that order does currently take place, it's just delineated in chapter sixteen as a specific method for doing it.
So what we're. There ought to be a, in my mind, there ought to be a forum for any party to make their case why it's kind of dangerous.
So going back to the investor owned versus owned by an individual, the reason why knowing that is important to me is because I think the ways in which we address those investor owned versus individual owned properties are going to be important. Investor owned, like clearly they're just, it's different, they're just waiting. Whereas an individual, maybe we might want to offer some type of help before we decide to, you know, move to the next step. So that's why I think knowing that is important. That's, I'm most concerned, of course, with, I love that we know these fives and fours now, I didn't, that's so exciting. So, I mean, I'm personally most interested in the fives and the fours. And then if we decide to move forward and doing this on kind of a, you know, on a step-by-step basis. Because I think that there are levels to all of this. It's certainly not going to be knocking everything down. I mean, maybe we're going to want to have some help for some folks if we realize that they are individually owned. And so there's steps to this, but I definitely think like the fives are most important to deal with. That's what I'm saying.
Thanks, Gigi.
Thank you, miss. Can you get back in off of Commissioner Johnson? Okay, let me back up. I think most of us in this room who's been in this city a very long time know who the investors are. I, I think you may not know all, but as I look at this, this, I see several houses that I know for a fact are owned by one person or an investment LLC or something. And I have personally been involved with this topic for many, 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 many years. Living in the community, working in the community. And I know personally how code enforcement have been out numerous of occasions, numerous times, trying to get compliance by investors with their properties to no avail. And it's always been, well, we, the orders or the laws or the codes that we have, they just doesn't, they don't work. And so, again, we are in a, a, a community where you have slumming blight that creates an opportunity for criminal activity and things to happen. And our communities initially starts to deteriorate because you have people that's just not in compliance. I've seen that all my life. So this is nothing new. I think, again, we know who the culprits are. We've had this conversation many times. What I would like to see, looking at the map, the majority of these homes are in, the structures are in my district, which we all know, which is traditionally has been a older settled community where you have the older homes. And now you have senior citizens that in some instances cannot afford to fix up their homes. Some things we're not talking about is the historic designation, is some of the historic districts. What all that entails as it relates to the upkeep of a home. What I would like to see is the homes that are in district one, that are more the ones and twos, that we take an opportunity to look at our CRA makeup and maybe do some type of program, some type of rehab program to help those on this list that may need just the extra help to, to do some works or rehab work on their home. Back a long time ago, in, in the planning department, in historic preservation department, there were grants, there was a grant available specifically for Pleasant Street. If you had a home in Pleasant Street and Andrew, you can.
I was going to.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so you can talk about that real quick if you want to describe to the group what the grant was like.
Yeah, so there, there was a pilot program. It was about for five years ago roughly. And I think the, the idea was that there were dangerous buildings in the Pleasant Street Historic District. And the city commission at the time wanted to establish like a, a grant program to, and I think it was a matching grant. And it was for a limited amount of money for, for like doing home repair. Like ultimately, I think there, there were a number of flaws, I think, with it. So first off, basically the building had to be a dangerous building or had to be either declared dangerous or meet all the criteria. So by that point, the, the amount of money that was put forward was not going to fix like major house, you know, components to bring the building even in the, out of the dangerous status. There was also, there are also some issues with the, the fact that it was a matching grant. So even if you did have somebody who was the, you know, the ideal sort of person we're trying to target, like a long-term resident who's in the house and just can't afford to fix the roof, there was also a, a matching component, which was a barrier, I think, to it. But the idea was, was, I think, a solid one. The other limitation, the way that the program was sort of in, yeah, thought about it was only for Pleasant Street, but we had other properties outside of Pleasant Street that I think would have been consistent with the intent. But that, you know, the way that the program was sort of envisioned, it was fairly narrowly, narrowly tailored.
And, and we did, and I think the, the need was there. People wanted to utilize the grant. And like Andrew stated, because maybe some of the residents, it was a matching grant, they just didn't have that upfront cost. But we did have investors, I think I developed, used it for a roof.
Yeah, we used it for one.
So it was, people were taking advantage of it. And like he said, we just did not have enough money. It was a one-time shot, it was a pilot program. And it worked. It, it, we saw a difference and it was an opportunity, I think. We could have tweaked some things, we could have made it more accessible to actual homeowners, whereas maybe they didn't have to do so much of a matching component to it. So those are some things that I'm interested in. You know, I don't want to be heavy-handed going into a neighborhood or community, especially in, within my district, well, within the whole city. But knowingly, you just have some people that just cannot afford to maintain their home. I do understand where some of these properties, like if you look on one of the slides, you know, this investment property is right around the corner from my house. That's been like this for like fifteen years. You know, I remember when it was, I, I actually knew who lived in the house. It was Ms. Peoples' house. She used to still sit on the porch and I used to walk by as a little girl and talk to and wait and speak with her. And it's been like this for twenty years and that's an invest, well, at least ten years, and that's an investment owned property. And in that case, the investor was sick. He moved out of town and he was ill and could not afford to fix it up. But he owned numerous properties and this wasn't his only property that was like this. So, you know, people like that fall through the cracks and it make the neighborhood, in addition to other elements in the neighborhood, it just make it more of a nuisance. And so, you know, I don't like walking by that, knowing what it used to be and what the potential of it is for a family could live in this, this house and, and grow and, and have a great life. So we definitely have to do something. I'm also interested in the fencing. I know in the historic department as well, we have a fence requirement. And that's something we can look to to add throughout the whole, within the whole ordinance, how that is, how that fence looks. I think it's only four foot high. And you, you write the tri area, what do you call it? The triangle, the visual triangle, that's, that's safety, that's important, that's important. Yeah, that's important. So, you know, I, I agree with that. And one of my biggest concerns that I'm not hearing, we're not even talking about, and I think this is something we really need to talk about if this is a, an area we want to go down. When you tear down these houses, what are we going to do about the pests that live in these homes? What are we going to do about the potential rodents, mice, coons, alligators? I don't know. But you, but that's serious, that's serious.
I'm going to list alligator.
You know, I'm, I'm serious, you know. There's all kind of things and critters, pests that are living in these abandoned homes. And if you go into a neighborhood and you just say, let's tear this down without some type of pest control mechanism in place, that's not, that's a problem. That's going to become an issue. So I think if this is something we're going to pursue, we need to look at that part of this as well. What are we going to do with the pests? How are we going to address that issue? But I just want to bring that to light, you know, we, we got to look at that because that's serious. And I saw somewhere in Orlando where like people were walking over the pests because the house wasn't in compliance. And it, it became a safety issue, you know. Parents come, let the kids go outside and walk with them. So, and, and I know in, in these abandoned homes that's been sitting up a long time, you cannot tell me this night anything living in there, you can't tell me that. So how do we address that?
Thank you.
That's an interesting thought to lead conversation on. So I apologize for being late, made a couple of notices as coming in. One of the things, go back to the, the discussion about the vision triangles and to make sure or to ask, you know, how are we dealing that when it involves vegetation too? Because I, you know, that's just in the area of the realm of safety in the corners. There are just so many places that I see where the vegetation has been blocking the vision of, you know, oncoming traffic and making it safe to get out and, you know, to go into an intersection. I'm surprised at the cost of demolition to be more than eight hundred thousand dollars. I mean, that just, to me is.
That was more?
No. With that eight hundred thousand to tear a house down.
That's three.
Eighty dollars a square foot.
Actually, the cost just went up with our new contract. It was a dollar eighty-five a square foot, but because of costs, it's now gone up to three dollars.
Maybe that's something we could work with Project Youth Build or something to find a, a better way to, to get it to repurpose and stuff. The list that I looked at that identified the dangerous houses and been wondering, where is there a list of other abandoned homes? Because there's a lot of, I know we've got a lot of properties out there that are abandoned, but I'm not seeing in this presentation. Did you guys discuss that already? Because I wonder, what I'm hearing comments from my colleagues, I'm very in line with the position that we should do this in a way that we're trying to restore the housing for residents that have been part of the community for a long time. When it is investor owned, get them to stand up or get out, you know, take care of the house. But definitely don't want to be putting somebody through this process that we then get viewed as being, trying to take profit from people. With the gentrification conversation already, there's just too much of that. And I know the city does do, you know, the rehab, replace, or rebuild. We're just lacking a lot of funds to be able to do it as much as we could. One of the houses that, one of the buildings that I did see is the commercial property that's on Southwest Main Street and like Second or First Avenue, which like in the process, they started to do some renovations and then the owner of the property died and it went back to, like the family didn't have the funds to finish it. Yeah, that's a, is that, I didn't see that on the list.
Yeah, it's not dangerous, it's probably why, because it's just a vacant lot.
Okay.
Yeah.
So in this, what I'd like, I, I hope that we can work with the codes in a way that we really make this a, a positive way to restore housing for individuals and then get people who are looking at doing an investment, to get them to see what they can do sooner than later. That you already discussed, is there a timeline that somebody can leave a place vacant, that it's a dangerous property?
So, so there's, there's no timeline. Once a property is dangerous, it's dangerous whether, you know, we then process it for demolition order if it can be processed to special magistrate.
Okay. That was a lot of that wordy document that explained that.
So if there's intent for the property owner to, to rehab it, they can always gift it to the special magistrate under the current system to make the case and say, I'd like, you know, six months to rehab it. And in the meantime, I will board it and I will secure it, fence it off and do things to protect, protect it. So, you know, one of our concerns is that if you have a dangerous structure and it's not properly secured and it's not fenced off, then you potentially have kids in the neighborhood, it becomes an attractive nuisance out there and we don't want, you know, anyone to get hurt. We don't want the crime to happen on, on the property. So we want the property owner to act responsibly and, and take care of this on their own. So the, the mere fact that a property is vacant or abandoned doesn't make an unsafe threat.
I understand that.
So, so we, you know, we rely upon our physical observation as well as complaints coming in from neighbors to alert us that a property is vacant and not being maintained. Some cities have put in place what they call a vacant house registration ordinance, which says that if you are, let's say in the bank, you're foreclosing on a piece of property and it's abandoned, then you have to notify the city and you have a responsibility as the bank to maintain the property and you have to provide us the contact information and so forth. But I've not heard that that's an issue here in the city.
What is it again?
So it's called a registration, a vacuum registration ordinance, VRO. And what that basically says is that if the property is being foreclosed on and ultimately becomes abandoned because somebody has evicted from the property and foreclosures can take a year or two sometimes in, in the courts, even before they get heard, the bank or the person that has the owner now has the responsibility to maintain the property, even though they may not have title to the property. So they have forced the abandonment of it. They are then obligated to register that property with the city. And a lot like we do landlord registration, they have to provide us with a, a contact person. They have to ultimately become responsible for, for the maintenance of the property. Because what will happen is, let's say I'm, I'm a bank and I kick Pete out of the home because he hasn't paid his mortgage on there. Code Neighborhood Enhancement comes and they cite the property. Well, Pete is still the technical property owner on there, even though he's not living on it. And so he may accumulate twenty-five thousand dollars worth of fines because the property is just not being maintained. The foreclosure comes along, okay, and there's this pending that has been filed and all of a sudden, we're wiped out of that. And our fines go away by order of the ordinance. You could probably explain that better than I can. But this ordinance puts the burden on the bank to maintain the property while it's in this foreclosure status.
I like, so we don't have a policy for that? That would definitely be something I hope we get out of. we get out of this workshop then to see what we could do to...
Fred. They were very popular during the foreclosure.
Here's Fred coming up.
Fred has a little bit to add on that. Looks like.
Fred Murray, Assistant City Manager. We looked into that several years ago, but what we did was we found out that we have a number of companies that were working for banks and we just had to contact them. So we didn't need, necessarily need a registration to do that because the banks provided a, a contact person who would do that for them, making sure the grass is cut and that. We looked into it and we didn't find a need at that particular time to go that way.
Yeah. And as I was saying, I haven't heard that that's an issue for us. So I haven't really checked with staff.
Okay. So the other way that I wondered, there's the abandonment by foreclosure, but I know we also have a lot of homes that are abandoned with individuals, not banks. And what is the process? How do we deal with those?
It would be the same thing that ultimately, I mean, yet I haven't heard that they're not being maintained.
Because nobody's complaining?
If a person walks away from a property and goes into default on their mortgage. Again.
There are homes without mortgages though.
Well, if, if there's no mortgage on the property and the person just walks away from it, then there's no...
What do we do with that?
It sits there until somebody buys it.
I'm just going to interrupt. We hear the process that somebody does that because the taxes are not being paid.
Right.
It becomes a streeted property. The county then looks into that process first and see whether or not they can identify if somebody wants to pay the taxes. If not, the way the state statute is that it gives the property to the city or the jurisdiction where that property is. We receive a number of properties that way and that's where we have that relationship with the county in doing that. Also, just want to remind you, our previous tax collector, tax advisor used to do a good job of that, teaching us. Anytime he found a property, he would go to that person and then come to the city commission because he's already worked out the deal.
He was great.
He was good at that. So I just want to let you know that that was some of the things that we did do. One of the things that I really wanted to make you guys aware is that there's a little loophole and that loophole is when they start pulling building permits. When they start pulling building permits, takes code out of the issue that becomes that issue and it becomes the planning and development on the building side until that just went up anyway.
That's policy, right? And so, and I was having this conversation with one of you earlier. It's what I call delay by hammer, right? So we, we have a policy that says that when you pull a building permit, as long as that building permit's active, we're not going to cite you on there. And so even if I'm not doing anything, every six months, if I hammer one nail on the property, it's defined, it's defined as, as being active. And so we just delay enforcement. My discussions with, I think we've done one property where it has an active permit at this point, but we're actually enforcing the code because they're not doing anything.
That's right. Must be something that can be tied up with a policy on that.
So we're going to be switching that, that policy around. If there's a violation and they're actively working on fixing it, then our, our staff will work with them to make sure that it, you know, they're prosecuting on their, their building permit effectively. But if they're just in this extension mode and one hammer every six months, so they can say that they're in compliance, we're going to cite them and bring them to the special magistrate and they can make their case before the magistrate as to why, you know, they're only using the hammer every, every so long.
So that sounds like a problem to me that there's a solution available. Is that something that we need to direct policy on that? Or, because to me, it just sounds like it, it's, it's too loose. If they're able to go with very little visible, because it's annoying for neighbors to see this going on. And I think, again, what our intention is, is to get housing in place.
Yeah. So, so.
And if they're just, if it's not occupied and they're just pulling permits for ulterior motives instead of actually getting repairs done, I, I would like, you know, staff to look at how they could correct the policy.
So we're, I think we've already made that adjustment internally.
Okay.
It was that way several months ago, but we've deviated.
One of the other things that I see is done is when somebody hasn't paid their taxes, they just kind of wait for a while, let it accumulate, and then they'll pay for them all at one time before somebody else pays for it. So again, one of my, what I'm trying to explore is what are our options when there is a home that doesn't have a mortgage and people have been able to move into another place and they're, you know, this other home is then becoming an annoyance for the neighborhood.
So we still have the ability to, to fine them and to lean them. And if there is no mortgage, it's real easy to foreclose because we don't have a bank that's going to be superior to us and our lean is...
But again, rather than foreclosing, I liked your attitude earlier to say, you know, let's see how we can work with them first, you know, find out what are their situations.
Well, sometimes you have to start the foreclosure process.
Hang, yep.
Right? To, to get their attention.
Giving them the notice.
To, to get to, you know, get to the point where they know we're serious and, and want to move forward with the resolution. Just because we start a foreclosure doesn't mean we have to effectuate the reason.
Well, I know in our housing committee, we talk about, you know, just put a notice on their door and that makes the tenants more responsible. If they're not living in the house, the thing is, it needs to go to their other residence so that they see it. If they're not visiting the house.
Yes. So we send notices to the addresses in the property preservation database for where they, they're supposed to get their mail. And again, before we ever start foreclosure, there's got to be a magistrate hearing to impose a fine. So they've had plenty of opportunity at that point to correct the violations. Again, our goal is compliance and never get to the magistrate. But if it does get to the magistrate, then the magistrate's going to, say you have thirty days to fix this and if you don't fix it, then it's going to be fifty dollars a day. So even after the magistrate, they have the time to come into compliance. And then when they don't come into compliance, then the fines will start running. Then when the fines accumulate, again, this is over a period of time, then we, and there's no mortgage, then we have the ability to come to the commission and say, we want to foreclose on this property and...
Well, I liked that. I just want to make sure that, you know, I would be supportive of the process being, you know, we've gone through so many years of not enforcing a lot of these policies, that we want to go through a process that allows a community to know that this is coming under the attention. And again, because we want to increase the housing availability in an area and reduce the number of abandoned properties that could be housed. But again, to do it in a way that we're looking for it to be a win-win and not to be hard case enforcement. Find out what their situation is and, you know.
And again, our philosophy here is not enforcement anymore, it's enhancement.
Well, a lean, a financial fine can be really hard for some people. So again, find out...
Right. And there's mechanism even when you have a fine to get that reduced or mitigated once you come into compliance. So, you know, we're not, you know, we're not looking at balancing the budget by the collection of fines. As a matter of fact, our, our revenue from code, from code citations is probably the lowest I've ever seen in a city of our size ever on there. So our philosophy is not going to use code as a revenue generator.
To get movement.
To inspire compliance.
Okay. So again, as we're going from not having been very active with these issues, let's make sure that we're doing it in a way that our residents are being treated, neighbors, family. I mean, this is our community and we don't want to create a hostile, it just, sometimes I know people just feel like it's, it's like police or government.
Either look.
So I, I'm hearing that. I just am emphasizing that that's important for us to get the compliance in place. And then if there are the investors who are, you know, there's, there's going to be a point where it's going to be, you know, if you're the right person to get a hard, rip position.
But we have, we have, we have to be blind to whether the, it's an investment property or not an investment. We can't get into treating properties disparately based upon the laws. And that will get us into more trouble than, than we would ever want to, to be. So, so we can't say just because a bank owns this or an investor owns this, we're going to prosecute that case any differently than if I own the property.
So in the case of banks, can we do a timeline to say? Because I know someone in real estate, I've seen houses sit for two years with a bank statement on the door and you can't contact them. Like, if you guys have a way to contact them, I've had people ask me if I can find out who, you know, owns, you know, who, who could be the bank for somebody to contact. So again, there are bank, there are times where the banks have those signs on the doors for two years and it just sits there. And I'd like to be able to have, can we not have some kind of leverage that gets them to work on it within a timeframe that's reasonable? And how do other communities deal with that?
When a bank is responsible for a property, they typically contract with a property preservation company to keep it up. That is who we contact to get things done if a code is violated.
But there's nothing that says this, that, you know, the people who had the loan moved out on October 2019 and still here it is, October 2021, you're having the property maintained, but it still hasn't been made available. There's nothing that we can do to...
Not from perspective of what I do.
Okay. Are other cities doing something different to get it to move out faster?
My past experience has been dealing with banks is very difficult. The only way to really get their attention is to, so a bank has started a legal process, foreclosure process. And sometimes if we intervene because we have...
Then you're adding more legal process and it slows it down.
Well, but it gets the bank's attention and generally they make the phone call. What do we need to do to get you out of this case, right?
Okay. I like that. That's a gentle nudge.
So, I don't think our past practice has been to intervene or act as, add ourselves as a party to foreclosures. I don't prefer to.
Most of the time, we are inferior in position to the foreclosure, to, to the foreclosing bank. And so we don't play a very active role in those procedures.
We just kind of step back, say, do it twice.
There's nothing that really we can do to, to, you know, oppose it. Never, you know, really tried to influence the, the course of events. Otherwise, never had, you know, anybody, you know, the client stopped telling, telling me, we want to do this or that. It's just been more of a mechanical process. And we get the foreclosure papers, we have to answer, we check whether we have, you know, the information's correct and whether we, we have anything to, to work with to oppose it. But it's by and large, you know, we're, we're in an inferior position and we're going to get foreclosed. That, that doesn't mean that the, that the fines are extinguished. They are extinguished from the property. But that's often the, the really only viable means that we, we have to recover those costs.
Now, there is one theory that I'm playing with and I've only briefly mentioned it. So I don't want to put it on the spot to confer with this. So I'll just preface that. But, you know, what, when we write off a, a lien or a set of fines, it's a lot like a bank writing off credit card debt or short sale. And when you do that, the bank generates a 1099 on that because it's declared, it's considered income for tax purposes. We can potentially do the same. And that will get, you know, if you send a letter that says, dearly, however you find, I hope, we're in the process of writing off a million dollars worth of liens to your property because you haven't paid them for the last seven years. I'm thinking of one of ours, any hitters here on there. Please be advised that in accordance with federal law, we'll be sending you a 1099 and you will have to declare it as income.
Yeah. You send that to the bank or those previous software calls?
I send it to the person who, who is responsible for the fines, which in this case would be somebody that we're trying to get their attention to. So it would be the previous owner.
Yeah. To me, that's going in the wrong direction because they're already now.
Well, it depends. If they were the ones that generated the violation, right, and the bank inherited, I don't say you use that in every case. But for example, we have one property that's at the top of your lien list who has a million dollars worth of liens for failure to do landlord registration. Okay? Still owns the property. Okay? What do we do? What's our alternative at that point?
Well, maybe we could talk about that. I know it was just taking up a lot of the conversation. One last question I had is, do we have a list of how many foreclosures we have in our community? It seems to me that that inventory is pretty low compared to what it was, you know, ten years ago and stuff. But do we know how many foreclosures we have in the city? Okay, I see a lot of that. That's all.
I will tell you that the trends based for the last quarter of 2019 nationwide, our foreclosures are back on the rise.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go around the horn again, you know, I kind of, I see three tiers here. And, you know, I mean, I think you presented us with some good options. We have a statutory responsibility, is, is my simple assessment. If there's something declared dangerous, we, we may not, but we shall take action. That's what, what Officer Backhouse is saying. And so we are neglecting that responsibility with the way that we have approached this and funded it in the past. So we need to take care of that, especially with these significantly dangerous properties. That house that you showed us that had a fire in it, that very easily, I mean, so people were living there, it very easily could have ended in loss of life. Very easily. Especially if there was drug use going on and people were passed out. That, that's something you can't undo. And so with these extremely dangerous properties, not only are we, by not addressing them more aggressively, neglecting our public safety responsibilities, but we're sending a message to the surrounding neighborhood that that's okay. And it's not. It, it absolutely brings down the quality of life and, and the dignity of, of all of the neighbors living around there, working hard to maintain their neighborhood and, and, you know, make it a good place to live. And so those, those are the ones that we absolutely need to prioritize. I understand the intricacies and complications. There's property versus bank property versus, you know, somebody who's bought it to sit on it with, with maybe good intentions. I think, you know, and Gigi, you brought up some folks that probably went in with good intentions and life happens and they just got behind and couldn't catch up. I think separate from that, I think we're all incredibly empathetic to the individual homeowner who because of other financial situations just can't, you know, a limb falls on their roof and that, you know, they just don't have the funds to repair it. That's a small portion of what we're talking about and one that we can address and deal with. And I don't even think we need to do it through CRI because I'd hate for that, because somebody lived in a CRA district, MD-CDRA district, they were able to get relief, but if they didn't, they wouldn't. So, I mean, if that is a priority to the commission, that's something that I would like us to ask the city manager to consider and include as an increment in our, in our budget discussions. And try to figure out, okay, well, what, what does that mean every year? I mean, what, what would it take to offer that, that basic core relief to the owner occupied housing that, that would keep them in their house and keep it safe and livable, you know, and, and sort of prevent things from deteriorating further. And again, I think that's a pretty small subset.
Right.
Yeah. You know, and then, you know, beyond that, you know, I think there's, there's just a lot of folks that, once they knew that we were addressing this in a serious manner, would take action and, and start fixing their properties. I mean, I just, you know, it's because we've never done it really in a substantial way, then the message has been clearly sent. You don't have to worry about it. I mean, I mean, it's, I know it's a, it's the exception and we shouldn't base policy on the exception, but you know, a guy that just decides, I don't... don't believe in a landlord license, so I'm never going to pay it and I'm going to rack up a million dollars of fines because you're not going to do anything about it. There's an easy cure to that, do something about it and then the problem goes away. So, you know, I, I think all this has been very instructive. You know, what, what I would like moving forward is for staff to come back with us with, you know, what would a plan, what would a fully funded plan look like to deal with the most dangerous and, and most problematic properties in a, in a sort of immediate and effective way? And then start looking at those other properties, you know, and coordinate that with a, with a, you know, an outreach mechanism so that every one of them knew, hey, we're, we're doing this. It's, it's your responsibility to respond or this is going to be the outcome. And I think we start to see a lot of movement there. Because there's, there's just no value into our community of having these properties in the middle of the neighborhood for all the reasons that have been stated. And frankly, for, for a lot of these most dangerous ones, it, it's way more expensive to go in and rehab them, to make them livable than donate it to Habitat and put up a nice new, you know, home there that somebody's going to live in and respect and become, you know, part of the neighborhood. So, you know, I don't, it's not like I'm walking away with here where I know all the answers. But I think it's clear that the status quo is not effective. It hasn't been working. And we need to dedicate the resources, but in attention and funding to be, be much more responsible to our statutory duties for these dangerous establishments. On a separate note, you know, Mark, you and I talked about this recently. I think that there is a generational opportunity for the school board to acquire the property next to them at that old social security building. You know, I know there's different groups that have, well, Andrew, you alluded to it, that there's different groups that have had aspirations, but not necessarily either the financing or the wherewithal to, to, I mean, they say, there's, they've had an idea that seems cool, but not what it takes to actually make it happen. And y'all may already know this or not, but that property goes back quite a ways. And so the school really needs that for future expansion, for parking. But they need that space too. I mean, they absolutely need that space for whether it's classrooms or administration or whatever. And so, you know, I, I think if, if we can try to get the groups in a room, if we can play that role as convener and say, hey, school board, here's some people, you know, they, they might be interested in, in selling this to you. What, what, you know, what's a fair market price? That could really transform into something outstanding, you know, in whatever, it's working against our own self-interest, it's off the tax rolls, but it's, that's fine because it would be well-maintained and well-used and it actually probably could be a community, something the community could access and, and, you know, make it a more than a, just a school use. So I just think, I think maybe a simple, sure, phone call and, you know, aren't you interested in this? At Los High School, it's really not going to have this opportunity again. I think they missed an opportunity with what Starbucks is now. They, you know, really probably could have used that space as well. So.
If you can get available this morning and say you have therapy.
Mark, we'll, we'll get you in in one second. But yeah, it's, you know, anyway, that's not having to do with the, the, I mean, that is not the most dangerous building. You know, there's just an opportunity going unrealized there. If we can help facilitate that transformation, I think that we, we, there's no, there's no downside to this. Okay, going back around the horn, we had Adrian and then Gail and then Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So took, I mean, Commissioner Simmons, you mentioned your house that had 10 years it was issues. And I know Commissioner Warner is saying we shouldn't go minimum. We shouldn't go too hard, but some of these properties have been decades of just...
I'm saying it depends on...
It does, it does depend. Going through this list, I would say 85 to 90% of the ones here are investor, I mean, investor owned by somebody not their own home. And then they hurt the rest of their neighborhood. They are, while we don't want to hurt that person who owns that property, they are right now hurting everyone around them from vermin. Yeah, some places are full of vermin.
Alligators.
And alligators are coming out. Sewers are coming out. But if we, say we demo the building, these people have already shown that they are not good property owners. Because for whatever reason, they, they can't keep their property going, either investment or whatever it may be. If we just demo the property, now there's going to be a lien on it. And then if we don't foreclose and try to do something else with that property, it's going to sit there for 20, 30, however long. That's the issue with the heirs properties is they're, they're maybe worth a lot. It's worth $8,000 and it's going to sit there forever because it's not really worth a time to even do probate and all those things like that. I think we need to make sure they really do, we need, this whole thing, there's hundreds of them in here, fines, and we don't do anything about it. And that's why we see all these issues. We need to, if you don't pay, if you don't keep your house up, and definitely the investment, the ones that are, well, granny who has issues, we should, I think we should fund that. I know we have, the ship program is also somewhat used for that. Is that correct? You have some ship funding? You know, looking at that. But I, I hope that we can give the direction to staff that we should start foreclosing on properties that are dangerous. Because once we can get them, we can turn around and get them back into working order so they can start providing housing for our community. So that's, and I'm a demolition. I do think that properties over 50 years, we should look at trying to do salvage on them, both for environmental reason, but also both from a PR reason. We start knocking down buildings, there's going to be, people are going to get upset. And at least we can say that we are salvaging it and trying to reuse the materials from those buildings. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So I agree with a lot of what everyone said at this table. I love your idea about the school board and trying to be a kind of a convener between the two parties. And I also in agreement with Commissioner Simmons about making, potentially making some CRE funds available for some properties that need some help and people that need some help. And I know that we are going to be getting a list soon of, of potential increments for that. So I would be interested in seeing that on that list. You know, I heard something here that concerns me sometimes in situations, and that is treating everyone the same because there are different circumstances with folks. I'm in 100% agreement that we need to be focusing on the most dangerous properties. Whatever we need to do, we need to remedy those, that situation, like, let's do that. But with everyone else, I want to make sure that we balance what our, what we need to do legally in terms of treating everyone the same with also being creative in our approach to remedy the situation. And I want us to be really, really thoughtful about that as we go through this process. So I think it is going to be, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to hear that you've familiar enough with these properties to know that a lot of them are investor owned. Because I think that makes a difference. I think heirs properties is really important. We need to be very sensitive with those, with those properties and individually owned properties. So all of that to say that I understand that we have like a legal responsibility for some things. But I think at the same time, we can also be creative in the way that we address some of these issues. So I would like to have, you know, the fives, I'm agreeing with that we just need to take care of those. And everything else, I'd like to know, have a little bit more information about those. And then, once we have that information, be able to come up with a plan about how to, or at least direction for a plan about how to...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's hard for me to believe that there isn't an opportunity with community partners to help get folks who are living in their own property and it's falling down around them to get that fixed. But there's got to be an impetus. For whatever reason, those people have not, through paralyzing fear or through whatever reason, they haven't chosen to go, to go find the danger. So we need to be prepared with a, a list of some small number of community partners. And when we go to them and say, look, your house is going to get knocked down unless, unless this gets fixed. These are folks that will make a phone call for you and get some process started to help you. That keeps us from getting in legal trouble with, by treating them differently than, than investor owned properties. But it still gets the problem solved. Because the, the point here is to have livable properties where all these properties are. Whether through repairing what's there and making it livable for the people who are already there, or if it's just not salvageable, getting something new there so that there's a good place for people to live there, however that ends up happening. That's my goal at least. There are community partners who will, who will assist in that. When we go to, again, it's a small number of, a small percentage of folks who are living in their own house that's falling down around them, who we're going to have to do something about. If we can help those folks get input from community partners who will help them, then that achieves the goal. Now, if they say, thank you very much, I appreciate the list, and they don't do anything, at some point, they're harming the people around them. All these properties are harming people around them. You don't end up with one or two properties on the block. You end up with the whole block make problems sooner or later. I mean, that's, that's going to happen. Because a family can't have their children there because their alligator's coming out of the house next door. Or mice, you know, whatever. Somewhere in there, there's a, it, it becomes unsafe to let your kids walk around. People are using drugs in the house next door in the middle of the night, making noise. And it becomes unsafe and then people leave the neighborhood. Before you know it, you have a whole block full of homes that are unoccupied. We have to, I, I think we have a responsibility to try to help people make connections to get something done. But if they're unwilling to do that, then, then they're not helping any more than somebody who bought 10 properties and left town. But I do think it's possible, and we can certainly help with this. We've all got connections with, with community partners who can be useful and would love to be useful. We call the community foundation and say, hey, Barzall, what do you think? And I'll promise you, they come up with, with a list pretty quickly. So, so I think that there, we do have a responsibility as a city to be helpful to folks who can't help themselves and own their own properties. But we also have a responsibility to make sure that the problem ceases to grow and starts to shrink and becomes, you know, useful for the people around them, their property values, for their children, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I do think it's time we, we started moving forward with this. And I know that 13th Street property is an outlier. But boy, if we could make that connection to get the school board to be able to use it, that would be a win for everybody. To be honest, I don't hold out a lot of hope for that. But, but boy, would it be a win. So, yeah, that's something we should pursue. But I recognize that, you know, the other 118 properties have a lot in common. That one is different. So I'm happy to make calls to community partners if it's useful and helpful. But I do think that we need to move forward. We're not going to do 118 properties in a year. I mean, realistically, that's just not likely to happen. We don't have the, you know, freed up $900,000 on the, on the budget to just start doing that. But once again, the story that we need to move forward with is that we have a responsibility to, to help the city be better. And the city isn't better by letting places just implode. But we have, there are times when property owners just don't do what they need to do. And it's the city's responsibility to push them forward to get the right thing done. And that's a story that we need to tell. Instead of letting the person who bought a bunch of properties and left town and let the properties fall apart, call the media and complain that the big bad city's doing something horrible to them. We need to own that, that communication process before we get started on it. And I know I'm a broken record on that. But I would really like to own the process before we start. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, I think we're summarizing and following up with what Commissioner Johnson said. Even with the fives, I think what our assessment process should be doing is looking at who and why. Each of those properties is in the position that it is to try to find a solution that can maintain their presence or if it's an investor. But I think it's, we need to have that process of assessing who's there, owner, and, and why is it in the condition that it's in. And at the same time, developing some relationships, doing some reach out to our partners such as Project Youth Build, the San Fe College Construction, the UF Construction. Because tearing down a house is just as valuable of a lesson and a skill as building a house. And that opportunity for developing some vocational skills is excellent. And also looking to rebuilding together and Habitat to work on what we could do with rehabbing and restoring the home for people who are living in them or could have family members move back in. And if it's not salvageable, but it is owned by a family or, you know, one of these heirs things, and I know Assistant Manager Murray has reached out to a lot of the heirs people. But if there's a way that if the house isn't salvageable, help walk with them to the process that they could at least sell it for funds that could go back to the family more than to us. Because the heirs process, a lot of times, it's, it's individuals dealing with a lot of problems. And as we talk about the restoration of justice, that's something, there may be something that's going to assist us in the healing process that we need to do across this community. Again, look to where it can be a win-win. But build our partnerships at the same time that we're doing an assessment of who and why that house is in that condition and what can be done to assist them. In all fairness, whether it's an investor or if the investor has funds to do it, then we need to increase a notch to get them to get it done. If it's family who don't have it, then we want to get them with the partnerships who can help them get it fixed. And it just, I think we can do that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. City manager, I have a question. When you put a lien on a property and the property owner goes and pays the property taxes, would that lien be on it, is on the taxes? How does that work? They just pay the property taxes and it's still, the lien is still there?
Correct. The lien has nothing to do with the property taxes unless you start the presentation. The program that we haven't done here yet, converting those nuisance liens to special assessment liens. And then they'll appear in the same portion of your property tax bill as the fire assessment and the solid waste assessment for the county, which we call below the line. So it would, it'd take about a year to show up there, but it would show up and then become part of the taxes and assessments deal.
How common is that practice?
I'd say majority of the cities, I would, super majority in the states is doing that.
Okay. That, I would be interested in something like that. I think, so, so if we put a lien on a property, when the property owner goes to collect the property or say they sold the property, so when they sell the property, the new owner may be, may or may not have to pay the property taxes, do the, the current owner have to pay the property taxes before they sell?
So, so let, let's make sure we're talking about the same thing. So the liens that we could put on of going along or boarding up the house, where we've actually incurred costs that are associated with the property, fines for... for, let's say, landlord registration, or heat healing, or things along that line, which are punitive, and we can't convert those.
But you could do the nuisance thing?
The ones where we actually go onto somebody's property and perform work, which isn't a lot.
Right.
We don't have a lot of those. And where we do do, we, most likely, we end up getting paid.
Yeah.
Right? And I think we've had a pretty decent record of getting paid on those. But for the other paid ones, where they do convert to a lien, we can convert those to a special assessment lien. And that way, if they don't pay it, it becomes a, in essence, a tax lien on the property and it could be sold, the property could be, taxes could be sold, and then ultimately property, you know, there. The majority of our liens are punitive, these, and those, we don't have the option. But when you sell a property, that lien does not get extinguished. And so for a buyer to have clear title, you get a title insurance?
They have to pay it.
Somebody has to pay it, right? Either the buyer or the seller, some combination.
Okay.
They're not going to get, they're not going to get clear title. There are cases, though, where somebody may say, "I don't really care about having a clear title." Very rare, right? But sometimes you're giving a quitclaim deed instead of a warranty deed or a special warranty deed, and the liens could go from buyer to seller to, doesn't happen a lot, but it's a household.
Okay. So, I like the idea of looking at the fives and the fours and looking at the process to assess the fives and the fours. And what really helped me out, and you maybe can get this to me later and give to the rest of the commission, if we have a photo of the property, just to see the condition of it. Because we have a list, but for me, I'm visual.
Well, what we'll do for each of the properties that are five and four is not only will we give you a photo, but we'll give you our analysis as to why, and if five or four, what the current property owner is, whether it's foreclosure, whether, you know, we can tell whether it's investor-owned or, we'll call that out for each one.
Right. And I just like that, to pay attention to detail, just so we can have the full knowledge of what the property looks like and just the condition of the property. And the reason I brought up the CRA being part of some of the solution, I was once on the CRA board, CRA board, and I had opportunities throughout my career to be involved with other CRAs throughout the state. I'm familiar with CRAs and some of the programs that they have. And there are programs in the state of Florida that have home repair programs within the CRA department. And I brought this to CRA's attention maybe three years ago when we were looking at all just the homes that needed repair in Pleasant Street and Fifth Avenue and all these historically African-American communities that sit in the CRA district. And the purpose of the CRA is to eradicate slum and blight. And that's the purpose of a CRA. And so, looking at some of the programs, the home repair programs, and I looked at the actual documents and what all that entails, and I actually spoke with several folks and several CRAs that had these programs, just to see how does it work, you know? So it's very streamlined. It's not like everybody that lives in the CRA can just actually go and gets, be a part of the program. It's very well streamlined. The lawyers look at the actual application very carefully. They make sure that the applicant or whoever that person is meets certain criteria. So it's not like we're just saying, "Okay, this is a freefall, you live in this district, you can come and get some help." It's very streamlined, and it's not unusual. And so I think, as we move forward, we think about maybe looking at other CRAs in the state and looking at some of the programs that they have. We understand we're gonna, this is a 10-year deal, then we're out of here. So let's look at maybe how can we help that person that may need help with a roof or have a cold violation, like you mentioned, a tree fell, and they need some type of help. But I think if we have something available like that, that's streamlined, that's a well-thought-out, put-together program, we can do what the CRA is created to do and that's eradicate, eradicate slum and blight. So I'm very interested in that. I would like to maybe get with the city manager later on and share my thoughts with him on that as well. Partnerships with Youth Build and Habitat for Humanity, I think that's a great idea. Those are some great skills that some of our young men and women could use. I think that'd help alleviate some of the costs and some of the burden. I've also experienced working with Youth Build. In, again, Pleasant Street area, there was a fence that was put up that was not supposed to be there because of the historic district, and the lady did not have the money to take the fence down. So we got with Youth Build, and the Youth Build went in and took the fence down, and they provided the material. And the lady just purchased the home and just couldn't afford it. Because if she didn't take the fence down, she was going to be fined, and she couldn't afford it. Youth Build went right in, took it down, like I said, they purchased the supplies, and the lady was so grateful, and she was just so happy about it. And Jonathan expressed to me, these are the type of projects our kids need to be doing because we want them involved in the community. We want the community to know that we are here and we're wanting to help, and it just gives them, it makes the children, the kids feel like they're giving back and that they are a part of the community. So I think that's an excellent idea. So, in short, what I wanted to see is how we address the pest control issue if we could, if we move forward with the demo and having sure, making sure that we have the assessment, five and four assessment process in detail so we can actually look at what the actual homes look like and buildings look like, how we can partner with Youth Build, and how can we come up with a home repair program in the CRA district, looking at others within the state of Florida. And, oh, and also the idea of salvage. I think that's a great idea.
That should be nice.
Yep.
Thank you, Commissioner Warren.
When we were talking about the foreclosures, is there a way that we can, again, I'm trying to figure how we can put the onus back on the banks? Because I know that if you're talking about liens going upon the individual who previously had the loan, is there not something that we can create a policy? Because individuals who have been foreclosed upon and have been forced out of the home, they have to leave by a certain date, they have no way, and legally, they're not allowed to come back on that property to maintain anything. So if they've been foreclosed upon and they've been forced out of the property, there should be some way to put that notice back on the bank that immediately you are responsible for everything.
So, yeah. So I understand what you're saying, and I agree completely. So once the person is foreclosed upon and the bank takes title, then we treat the bank as the property owner.
Okay.
And the bank is subject to fines.
Okay.
The problem that communities have is the interim period. So on the bank, I send Pete a note telling him that I'm going to foreclose on him. Pete says, "I'm out of here," right? He doesn't wait for the foreclosure to happen. He picks up the notice because he knows what's going to happen.
I understand, that's a different deal.
So there's such a year period where Pete still owns the house, the bank is out for foreclosure, and then the question is, who maintains the property?
Okay. I was just curious about that, you know, making sure that we don't allow that practice to go on. And, oh, there's something else I was going to follow up with, other than that, you know, if there's alligators in it that need to be removed, we can have LSU come with their tigers?
No!
Sorry.
Unintended consequences.
Yeah, I don't know, but, yeah.
Okay, we've got this other presentation still. But Commissioner Simmons, I just wanted to make clear, I support the homes or rehab, and if there's a streamlined CRA model out there, then that's great. I just don't want to restrict it to the CRA district because there's going to be homes outside of there that are under the same financial constraints and still need it. And so, whatever that process is, let's look at that. But I'd rather fund it through general fund, so anybody in the city that needs that can actually qualify. It's not just the people in the district, right?
That was the other point I wanted to ask you.
Sure.
Because let's use the CRA funds when it is in the CRA district. We can spread our money further. And the homes that aren't in the CRA district that can use the city ship and other funds, we can get it to spread farther.
Matt, you have that discussion? If we use the CRA funds for that, it means we can do other things with CRA. I mean, it's a discussion we need to have. I just don't want to restrict it to the CRA district. That's all I'm saying right now.
Right.
Okay, the other, the clearboarding, please, as quickly as you would like to.
Yeah, totally, super brief.
It's not very long. So my goal out of this would be for us to put forward a clearboarding ordinance.
Okay. So we already kind of spoken about, you know, dangerous buildings and abandoned property to an extent.
Oh, yeah.
So essentially, when the owner of a dangerous building is notified that their building is considered dangerous, they have to either demolish it or repair it, as they mentioned. And so, for a period after a month or so after they've been notified, they have to, they can apply for a permit to board the property. And as far as Alachon County and Hanzel Code goes, they just require that you apply wood, essentially. And so, this is more or less what it would look like. But in some places, they're determining that for a number of reasons, using clearboarding, essentially partly polycarbonate material, can serve for a number of benefits while it's on this abandoned or dangerous building for the time being. Some of those being keeping out squatters, reducing criminal activity, preventing arson, preventing illegal dumping and so forth. So here's another example of two buildings side by side. This is obviously more or less a temporary thing, just because hopefully that owner of the building is repairing the building in this time. And of course, if they end up not beginning to repair it, it will eventually luckily be demolished. There are places around the country who have begun to enforce this, one of them being an organized association, and other than, other ones being either state government or local municipalities. So for instance, in Phoenix, they, since 2015, required the structures, which have been unoccupied for more than 90 days, to be boarded up with polycarbonate material. Franny Mae, for their foreclosed properties, the properties that are, I guess, under their name are waiting to be sold, required that polycarbonate be used to board the properties. And then in Ohio, the state has also banned the use of plywood. They really only let you use it in cases of emergency or for about 10 days until you're able to use some polycarbonate material. And there, they've said explicitly that it helps address the general sense of blight, that the material is actually more secure and harder to remove than plywood. This was a big thing. In some cities, there's literal videos of people going at it, like, I think a copper or someone, just to make a point, like hitting it with a hammer, just trying to emphasize how more sturdy this material is. Obviously, you know, not as prone to fires and so forth. And then in Mobile, Alabama, they, them along with others, have identified that more or less per property, it's about a $500 to $1,000 increase of cost to use this polycarbonate as opposed to plywood. So that would be, I guess, one of the main, if not only, barriers to using that material instead of plywood at this time.
And I have to imagine that you could do reuse on it much more often than plywood.
Exactly, yes. You could, you absolutely could.
Plywood's usually one and done.
Mm-hmm.
So we've piloted this here with our staff on a few buildings. I went to where they can't tell that it's an abandoned building. And these are going to be buildings that, I see plywood on a place that's been there for, that house, right there, it's been 10, 15 years. At least with this, you can't tell. It increases the value of the properties around there, you just can't tell that it's an abandoned home. So other cities have passed ordinance where they mandate them. I would like for us to pass an ordinance and mandates that you could, with a few exemptions, like during, like a storm, you can put them up, or for a short period of time, like you break a window, you can put it up, but 10 days, 20 days, something like that. But I think it would, it helps, kind of, there's all these small little things we can do, and this will help, because abandoned buildings can be there for a while, and relatively easy.
Thank you, thank you.
So is that a cover, or is that an image on the polycarbonate?
No, it's just the, yeah, plexiglass.
It's clear glass, instead of the word.
Yeah, they screw in plexiglass.
Okay.
And then you can't tell, it looks like someone's looking at it.
Okay, cool idea, thank you. Okay, so let's hear from members of the public, if you'd like, on just the general issue of dangerous properties. Come up, just come up to the microphone right there. Because we're recording, and so that way everyone can hear.
Right up here?
You got it.
Okay.
Welcome.
Gadi Fabacy, resident of Pleasant Street neighborhood, and this is a follow-up to Commissioner Simmons' concern about the pests. There was a little house in the Pleasant Street neighborhood a few years ago that had been vacant for many, many years. A new owner bought it, and they're getting ready to have it demolished. And what do you think they found in that house? A boa constrictor.
Oh! That's nasty.
Mrs. Shepherd.
You can add that.
Hey, Township, very people's representative, and I wanted to say, this is something that had been going on for 15 to 20 years. Coast Department, I've been in many of the meetings, and they have been biting their fingernails raw over these things. These people have up to 17 different homes, and they live in Miami, they live in Georgia, they live out of state. But yet, when they came, were summoned, and came to board the thing, the Coast Department, because of the bank and the way the paperwork was worded, they couldn't do nothing, their hands were tied. And so, we need, as the manager said, we need rewording so that this here can help our Coast Department do their job and take this display out of our city, because the Coast Department have been doing their job. I've been going to these meetings for eight years, and I've been hearing this over and over and over. The house that she's talking about, Mrs. Simmons is talking about, G. Simmons, I know very well that house, that lady. And that's another one of the houses that relatives took over the house, and then they left it, right? Again, there was, again, the Coast Department's hands were tied because of the time period. And so, what do we got? More blight. So what the city manager had suggested, we're taking help back to the area, we'll help the Coast Department. Okay, I got something else I'd like to say while that time. I want to take an address that this is something that Habitat Humanity needs to have it turned over to them. And we need to put more money into Habitat Humanity so that they can actually do something with these bliteness homes. And let's put them back on the market so that we can collect taxes off. It's not always that I'm thinking about taxes, I'm talking about the neighbor next one. Why would that neighbor haven't taken, deal with this bliteness? And let's move forward with our city manager's ideals and the Coast Department ideals and Habitat Humanity and CRA. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
I actually have some pictures I forgot we weren't going to be upstairs, any of the pictures I'd like to show you.
I'm Sharon Bauer from Gainesville Neighbors United. In 1993, Frank McComber Jr. bought the three-bedroom, one-bath, 930-square-foot concrete block house shown there at 428 Northwest Second Avenue and paid $35,000. In February 2016, a DCF worker reported to code enforcement that Frank, a veteran who was 56 at that time and had health issues, didn't have a stove, had rats and roaches, and people were living in tents in the backyard, and clothes were hanging all over the bushes. Code enforcement told her they couldn't enter the house without permission but would check the yard. They went to the house and were invited in. There was a stove ready to be installed, and roach and rat traps had been placed around the house, but there was no sign of live or dead rats or roaches. Greta spoke to them about the trash in the yard. A few weeks later, the yard was in compliance and the case was closed. A year and a half later, the neighbors to the north began complaining about the tents and trash in the yard. And for nine months, Greta worked with Frank's caretaker, Patrick, to clean the yard, but a notice of violation was issued and fines began accruing. Then, in October 2018, GPD served a narcotics search warrant because two drug purchases and one attempted purchase there from guys named Chubby and Rocket, who were camping in... and one attempted purchase there from guys named Chubby and Rocket who were camping in the backyard had been reported during the summer. Two pipes and a scale were found, no drugs. Frank admitted that the pipe in his room was his and said he smoked marijuana, not crack. His only previous criminal record was from 2000 when he pled no contest to possession of a small amount of marijuana, did community service, and adjudication was withheld. GPD called code enforcement, code enforcement called, code enforcement officer Todd Martin responded immediately and called building. The inspection report says the house is unfit and the roof is falling in and the building official placed an unsafe structure on the house. There were 96 pictures taken that day and not one of them shows a roof falling in because it wasn't. Kim Tanzer went and inspected the house. There was a tarp on the roof and there was some water damage on the ceiling. Frank was ordered to leave. He was charged with keeping a public nuisance structure and there was no mention in the reports of where he went, reportedly to a homeless shelter. On the same day of the search, a demolition notice with a date, a demolition date of November 26th, about a month, was mailed to Frank's house and he was given 14 days to appeal. The house was demolished in December. What happened to Frank should not happen to our neighbors. So I hope that, I appreciate the fact that you are emphasizing rehab, but this all happened so quickly and it is a tragedy to the neighborhood, not just Frank. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on this topic?
Yes, good evening, Mark Vansusberg. It's about classification system. So when you have a property in a parcel, and I want to talk to the county a little bit about it, but you would have a classification system for it that's in top of what you already have. So whereas you, for example, you called a property abandoned and maybe it's neglected, maybe it's used for growing food. So if somebody's growing food in the backyard, you would have a layer on top of whatever systems we already have and you would call it, say, a working garden or something like Or maybe it's a wildflower garden. And so from a code perspective, maybe you see grasses there and there's wildflowers. And under current conditions, you would say you're out of compliance because you've got wildflowers and the grass is too tall, blah, blah, blah. I'm just, you know, explaining to you a system in which we actually classify properties as being, you know, part of some ecosystem services and that you would, you start to think about, hmm, maybe there's five different levels to that. So what is, you see what I'm saying? You follow?
Mark, address your comments.
Yes, sorry. But you see what I'm saying? It's like there's an ecosystem service level, say you're growing food in your backyard, is that type three, for example, what is happening? If you're just letting it go because it's wildflowers going, is that type four? So coming up with a classification system that basically designates what you're doing with the yard, whether it's for you guys to know what's going on over there or for the homeowner to say, I'm growing food in my backyard as part of my home business or my hobby, whatever. But imagine an ecosystem services layer to a parcel number. So imagine that, you don't do anything, I'm just saying imagine that. So that's one subject. The other one, get this, you know that corner that's 16th Avenue and 34th Street? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Oh, where the church is being-
That church has two months in order to put on that roof. It must have run out of money or something like that. So we need to do GoFundMe or whatever it is, $100, maybe $40,000 gets you a roof, basic roof and the sidewalls. And if not, that whole thing is basically trashed. And I don't know how fast you can do that, it'd be kind of jujitsu, but that thing is, you're talking about abandoned property, it's right on the corner. Do you know what I'm saying? That thing is about to expire. We have until April when it starts to get rain and hot and humid. You have like two months in order to put on the roof. Some of the materials seem to be there. I don't know who could do this and how we could pull this off, but that's about to be, and not, it always, or it is an eyesore, but the thing is about structurally about to be down.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. I drive by it several times a day and watch the progress not happen.
Well, we can see it.
All right, anybody else wish to speak on this topic? Code enforcement or neighborhood enhancement, sorry? I won't get used to it.
We all are.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Officer Backhouse, Mr. Manager, for bringing this to us. I think we had a good discussion here, a lot of good ideas. So we'll just report to sort of focusing in on some of these, which are all your points that we brought up. Next item on the agenda is general public comment for items not on our agenda. Okay, any member comment? Sure.
Really quickly, save this out of a place of such, such love for everybody. I really, really think that we should consider, instead of scheduling workshops for one agenda item, putting it to a meeting that we already have or something. Because while we had a great discussion, staff is left to figure out what seven of us just said with no direction, no clear direction, and certainly no weight as to which is fully supported by the full commission. And I think the workshop, you know, format works against us. And, you know, a lot of staff has had to be here when, you know, we could have done this at another time. So I just, you know, as I think of my time remaining on the commission and what may or may not be in the future, I just, I really want us to be a lot more efficient when we get together and when we put items on the agenda. Because sometimes we have these workshops, we have great discussions, and something comes of it and sometimes nothing comes of it. And I don't know what the calculus is for that result actually happening or not happening. And I just, I just think that cognitive of staff's time, cognitive of our time, I just think that we should be more efficient.
I think you'll take it under advisement. Mr. Manager?
So I just want to comment, I'll take the hit on calling the workshop, because that's where I was used to. But from the staff's perspective, we'll be asking for special meetings, not workshops in the future.
Mr. Warren?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I, along those same lines, I don't mind having a special meeting at all, there are times when we need to focus on one topic like this, but not being able to take any action and give very clear direction to staff, probably, there are times when a workshop is necessary if it's entirely educational, but we, if it's something like this, we ought to be able to make one or two motions.
Typically, historically, workshops have been educational, informational, and usually involve large community meetings. And then when there is a special topic that doesn't fit well into an agenda and we need to have lots of discussion, that's typically a special meeting. So if the call came, that's fine and, you know, we'll figure out what works best for future topics. Yes, Commissioner?
What's next from it? What do we take from this?
Well, I think staff's going to go back and digest what they've heard from us and then move forward. I mean, I would be, I wouldn't be surprised if at our next city commission meeting, Commissioner Santos potentially makes a motion to move forward with the drafting of a clear board ordinance. But then I think staff also has to look at what they've heard from us and what we support moving forward with, formalizing that into some actionable items. I mean, so there's some budgetary issues that they have to work into. And I think in this you put, to start in fiscal year '20, we're in fiscal year '20, so I think that meant, you meant fiscal year '21. We don't have a budget for it right now, we don't have $800,000.
We have some and, you know, based upon the discussion and looking at the fives and fours, it's my intent to cross those out and provide the commission with a, you know, where we may have some ability-
So that's what'll come back, that sort of thing, and how we would prioritize the properties and what the sort of outreach and communication would be. Some of the stuff is longer term, like if we're talking about home rehab and how we would fund that and what the process would be, that's a longer term discussion. So anyway, all that'll come back to us as we get ready, I imagine. Okay, any other member comment?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I personally would like to have a discussion about the policy analysis for the code enforcement options. I think there's a larger discussion about, not tonight, a larger discussion around how people are taking care of their properties. And there's some ideas up here that I think we should discuss, so I'd like to see them on a, you know, commission gender or general policy. Maybe we can, we don't have much coming up for the next general policy meeting, maybe we can put just the specific item on there. I know we can't take any action, but, you know, that's my thought.
That's next Thursday?
Thursday, well, no, the second Thursday of March, because we're at the end of February.
Oh, we have a fifth Thursday this month.
It's March 12.
The next general policy committee meeting?
March 12, yeah.
March 12?
Well, this one tomorrow.
Yeah.
Right, right, okay, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, we can do it a minute's long, I mean, that's, that's no problem. I'll work with the clerk. Any other member comments? Okay, we are adjourned.